Microphones.
Okay, says it's recording.
Aye.
Okay.
And we're getting it in?
Uh-oh. Hang on. Okay. Okay. I think so, and... Yeah.
We're all set for recording or live?
Yeah.
All right, well, I'd like to call a special meeting to come from Holliday Island to order. So, 1:00, 20:01, 1:01:21, 1:01:21, 1:01:21, 1:01:21, noon. That's our... Would I put a meeting? I'm glad you're here, so to speak. The United States of America, and you did revival which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wes, why don't you call the rule?
Yes. Councilman Boomer.
Here, here.
Councilman Boomer.
Here, here.
Councilman Boomer.
Here.
Councilman Boomer.
Here, here.
Councilman Boomer.
Here, here.
I've heard this all here in the county court, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, it's our forum.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted. You're muted on...
Oh, I muted him, but he... It's okay, he's talking into the mic.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm muted by PC, and then you're gonna get... Yeah, big time. Do we have any discussion on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, here.
Yes, sir.
Uh-oh, they're getting no sound.
Yep.
Why? Why? The mic is unmuted on the webcam.
Holly, can you hear me?
Holly, can you hear me?
Bob Dyer says he's getting sound fine.
Maybe, maybe it's Holly. Just her machine, that she's not getting it.
Rebecca Sherman says she can hear everyone.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, our agenda, I got a... For, for previous agenda, I noticed down underneath the public comments, you don't have a spot or council member comments, and the resolution was passed only one of them, that's all for, or we've served that in our agenda. I'd like to add council members' comments after 9:00.
So... Okay. Okay, we're going on. Okay, I'll get the picture and the template. All right, other comments? You'll notice that I scratched, if you have a little version of the agenda, I scratched discussion on the Holliday First Rental Agreement, we had that made. Had we, I, 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 we did look at the available space, but we are trying to work on that. And I added the point about discussion of returning your request for call occasions. If there's a lot of discussion or corrections to the agenda, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
As amended. All right, my... Link, a motion to approve the agenda, ten seconded. Any discussion? All favors ahead.
Aye.
To both. All right, the agenda is approved as amended. We have no minutes to approve several field of recognitions, proclamations, or memorials. During the hour, we'll move on. This is a special meeting, so we won't have any committee reports. They have no old victims, so we can move on to new victims, 2021-012, a resolution concerning the website. This is where we left off, and by the way, for the public, we apologize for the technical difficulties from the regular week on Tuesday night. We lost our internet at the meeting, so we were basically trying to finish up the meeting. So, do I have a motion to put Resolution 2021-012 on the floor for consideration?
Some of it. I'll second it, and if we didn't read it before, and then hit to the floor, would we...
Well, I think I have it out of order. I think the first thing to do is have a motion to put it on board, and then Wes will read it.
I'll make a motion, second a motion.
All right, Jerry, a motion to put Resolution 2021-012 on the floor for consideration. That seconded it. Any discussion? All favors ahead.
Aye.
To both. The item added, so Wes, will you read the resolution?
Resolution, the House of Representatives, Tom Holliday Island, to establish a contract with the email provider.
Let me stop right there. That needs to be corrected to website provider.
Uh, no.
No.
It is an email provider.
We did website last week.
We did the domain name 11.
All right. Well, then what were you telling me before?
I'm telling you, on the thing, the... On the agenda, it says 012, website, not email.
Yeah, it should be email, that's right.
Okay. But the resolution is correct. The resolution is for a website provider.
It's just on the agenda, that's right. You got it right.
The resolution is for the email provider. Whereas, Tom Holliday Island has been recently incorporated, and will need a set of unique email addresses for town officials and any employees who are integrated to us doing specific work on behalf of the municipality. And whereas the use of personal email addresses and multiple email systems employed for personal email by these individuals would cause commingling of their business and personal email, as well as a lawful eventual permanent violation of municipal business emails, and whereas the use of new and separate email addresses of these individuals under a new domain name created specifically for the municipality would clearly identify the email addresses as originally from the municipality, and the contents is dealing with businesses of municipality. And whereas the use of new and separate email addresses would enable a more efficient and accurate means for search and retrieval of emails dealing with specific municipal business matters, and whereas the municipality will require the ability to permanently preserve all incoming and outgoing emails to the town officials who are dealing with the business of the municipality, a robust ability to search and retrieve emails based on specific criteria in order to address certain player freedom of information requests from the public on a primary basis, and the ability to local administration assign them and release them email addresses under the domain name of the municipality. And whereas the town Holliday Island desires to use an email system that meets above the requirements. Now, the end result by the town council of Holliday Island, in fact, the mayor was authorized to negotiate a contract with an email provider that meets the requirements cited above. The contract must be approved by the town council before signing. That has been approved by the town council all of the time, on this date of 1/21/2021.
Okay, Linda, this is your baby, so you want to...
We talked about the email providers at the last meeting a little bit, when we went through what we discussed at the time, and all of my good afterwards. And I'm of the opinion that I own, who provides email to Iced, in a very secure fashion, and they can do search and retrieval, and they automatically archive emails for you, so you never have to risk not having an email that was sent or received. It would be our best choice. Their cost actually gets this much for the first year, and it's a yearly contract. So, if we want to switch providers at the end of the year, we could do so. Um, I think that's... And I think it will cost us, I think I put my notes, my follow-up, that that would cost around $300 the first year, and about twice that much, I think.
Does that have to build monthly, or does it have annual? Do you need to get that $300 weekly?
I think it's billed monthly. I could check on that before we sign, but I think it's billed monthly. But you have to sign the year's worth at least.
Okay.
We were talking, right, and you did the most of your contract. Once you get the contract, then...
I'm pretty sure it was monthly, because I, you know, multiplied by 12 to get the annual cost, so...
I think we're all pretty done, provided. Okay. Any other discussion on the resolution? The town, I'm entertaining motion that I set up the resolution number 2021-012, wanted to make a motion to re-come to the resolution 2021-012.
I'll second it.
Motion made to have a... For the pass, for the resolution 2021-012, the motion made by Ken, and seconded by Lynn. Any further discussion? Wes, do you want to take the role?
Yes. Councilman Boomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Curry.
Here, aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffin.
Aye.
All are ayes, Mr. Mayor.
That the resolution passes. Again, moving on to Resolution 2021-013, the resolution supporting the Highstead project to pave the parking area at Dulce Fishing Pier. Do I have a motion to put this on the floor for consideration?
I'll move, we put the resolution about the Dulce Fishing Pier, 202021-013, on the floor.
Will I have a second? Linda, move to put it on the floor. Jerry's seconded, any discussion? All favors ahead.
Aye.
To both. The item added, Wes, can you read the resolution?
You don't have to. The resolution of 2021-012, and the resolution supporting the Highstead project to pave the parking area at the Dulce Fishing Pier. Whereas, the Holliday Island building, the historic wall, maintains its 50-year loan as a Dulce Fishing Pier. And whereas, this entity is named for a former honor member of Holliday Island, here. And where, specifically for the festival fishing, it provides an unusual living replacement opportunity for all area residents. And whereas, the fishing pier, parking area, and access to our situated on Forest Institute property, so mainly in our houses, and where the council area was immediately repaired, now being resolved by the town council of Holliday Island, the town of Holliday Island, all supports, makes it a record, in the city of Arkansas, the history of the total success. Years of the marine people that have grown, they have worked here, at the Dulce Fishing Pier. And leading this project will be a great benefit to the public, and especially to people visiting Indian Pass, in the age circles, who may not see their city traverse. That's a bid on the town council of Holliday Island, Arkansas, on this day, with 111,001 miles.
Okay. This is a project, it's a freehold, and everybody, Lawrence has been working on it for a couple of years, already through the board, and it's had its to the top of the list yet, so just to give it another try, so Lawrence, for the record, you want to add anything about the project?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My mom's always liked to bring my guys, council members, and bills, to support on the prior painting, so, and then put me on the cast, and I've been trying all over the time. And I think this is another opportunity for ICs to physically work together, hopefully to wait for the determined solution. Well, elevate some priorities, because it's the problem they get at. There are always looking for projects for great people to ask, so we have some other projects in mind, that when we get this one, that we get it into the system of IC, we want them individual projects to go along. Other than that, since we're seeing a resumption, I'll give you anything with us to the people who are interested.
Thank you, Lawrence. Linda?
Would it add to the weight of the resolution, in the next last word, I asked, something like, maybe put within the boundaries of the municipality? It says that it states that the corporate property is mainly my back end, it doesn't say anything about municipality.
That's true. Yeah, we could add where that is.
So, I suggest coordinating the characters to talk around common, within the limits of the municipality of all that I have. And common, just taking, uh, but also the main name, or is the main name. Something related to...
With the... The things relating to the fishing pier, parking area, and access drive is situated on Forest Engineering Property within the town of, the town limits of the town of Holliday Island.
Are we discussing boundaries?
Okay, just right in here.
I just thought that helps give us, legally for my, this, to the, you can go reason to say due to the resolution, it doesn't access us. Like we're pointing in.
Okay, Holliday, we've reached that, we've changed that word for the period. Whereas, the fishing pier, parking area, and access drive is situated on Forest Engineering Property within the municipal boundaries of the town of Holliday Island, and mainly by isolated, and...
Good.
Any other discussion?
Can I make one more question?
Carter?
I feel that this is to the, we, for this project, it will be a due cost to property owners and Holliday Island residents.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Well, I'm putting that, the group, the resolution, 2021-013, is amended.
I'll move to approve that 013 is amended.
I'll second it.
We have motion to approve, Linda said, and I had. Any further discussion? All favors, oh, Wes, call the goal.
Father Mike Griffin?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Curry?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffin?
Aye.
All in favor of this, now?
The resolution passes. Okay, moving on, the agenda, then. Next up on the agenda is a procedure for responding FOIA requests. Wes and Linda, I think we're working on this. Do you have something related to this?
I, I passed out a draft of, actually more of an outline of a procedure for FOIA. And we can go over it, I feel like this is probably mostly a discussion about it, and we can, we would come back with something, an actual resolution or something, yeah. So, at the top, you see, I, I thought it was necessary that we distinguish between a FOIA policy for the city and the FOIA procedure. Looking at some of the city websites, I see that they put their policy pretty prominently on their website, so that everyone understands they're committed to following law, and I think that would be something we should do, too. The policy is how, the statement of how the town of Holliday Island will implement practices compliant with Arkansas's Freedom of Information Act. Along with the policy, most cities have a request form, even Iced has a request form people can fill out. And it's a form that's filled out by someone wanting to access copies of the town's documents, reports, or meeting recordings. And then a FOIA procedure is actually the description of the steps in processing a FOIA request, including the responsibilities of those involved in the process. So, prerequisites are, and this is something I think we as a town council need to discuss, several people that I've talked to about the IT setup have recommended that as a city, in fact, this comes out of the municipal league, too. They recommend that we scan all the municipal documents, so that we, we can keep the hard copy, too, but if you scan it, if that hard copy gets lost, damaged, whatever, you've still got a record that's readable and understandable. So, that's a best practice, apparently.
One of all our documents, digital?
Well, forms that people fill out are not digital.
Okay, so the scan is...
Receipts that you get in the mail are not electronic, so there are some, we would hope that the most of them, things that are signed, don't get, you know, usually are in hard copy until they get scanned, so that's what I'm talking about. So, that, that, that's a best practice that the municipal league recommends, the IT-in-a-box people recommend, most anyone you talk to recommends it nowadays. And then you can back those up in cloud storage and retrieve them whenever you need to. And then we need an electronic filing system, which is naming conventions for documents and folders, and so it's organized in a fashion that you can retrieve things and know what, how to retrieve things. So, that's another thing we would have to set up, especially if we scan everything. It's so much easier usually and quicker to find something if it's been scanned, if it's organized correctly, in a filing, electronic filing system. The implementation of backup recovery system for all electronic documents and files, that would be very important to this whole process. Also, the implementation of cybersecurity systems and practices on the local and remote hardware used to store and connect with the storage devices containing the town's electronic documents. You have to make sure they're protected, can't get hacked, can't get accessed from the outside. Creating a form for FOIA requests, I think that's important for two reasons. So that we have a record of requests that we can maintain, and also it helps us assure that we're responding in a timely manner, because you kind of timestamp them in and timestamp them out, and, I mean, maybe that's overkill, it's, it's a best practice recommended by the Coalition for Freedom of Information or something.
It also eliminates opportunity for miscommunication on what was actually requested.
Yes, yes, and, and someone saying, well, you didn't get that to me in a timely fashion. You got a record of when it came in, how it was handled, stuff like that. So, and I would think we should enable the electric form, electronic form via the website, and have a paper form available in the office that can be filled out, which would be scanned, of course. But we need to, also, there are some things that we can charge for and some we can't. We can charge for the paper it's printed on and the printer costs. And there are some instances, and Lynn, you've researched the Freedom of Information Act a lot more than I have, I think there are special circumstances under which you can charge for personnel time.
Yeah, if the product is determined to be significant or whatever, that you may have to hire someone to do it, those costs can be clearly estimated, and then presented to the requesting, or a bill you pay them, and they'll pay you with that.
Okay, so that's part of the process, too. So, we need to determine a cost per hard copy of, based upon our printer costs that we, for the printer we get, and the paper costs, but I think we can come up with a number that we could use. Some, some cities just say it's 50 cents a copy, some say 25 cents a copy, you know, they use different numbers, they have those on their websites. Set up multiple methods for making documents available to people. We can post various documents, videos, recordings of general interest to the public on our website, and we're, we're links, provide links to the cloud server through the website, which right now is a Google Drive. We can post the videos and recordings to YouTube, which I have started doing. We can provide links on the website to those, or if someone comes in, you can provide them links or tell them how to find them. Actually, people can just go out and search YouTube. We can, FOIA requests would be filled by also copying the requested documents to a users, they bring in their own thumb drives, CD or DVD. I think Wes's desktop will have a CD/DVD player, as well as, you know, USB ports for thumb drives. And, or we can loan out a town-owned thumb drive to someone who doesn't have one, but is able to use a thumb drive, or they can request a hard copy. But I think our preference is to try to get them... But I think our preference is to try to get them to accept a, a document in electronic form. And if that document is already on the website, all we have to do is direct them to the website.
So have we been for certain investment or response to a request? Tell the quester who will get it on his line?
Yeah, I mean, if they can't, if they can tell us why they can't, we, we will, I think we should seek to find a, a way to give it to them. You know, whatever, whatever means they have. I mean, some people may not have any computers at home, somewhat, some may not have an internet access. And I think we have to, you know, whatever makes them happy, we, since we have multiple ways, I think we should strive to make, make the quester happy.
No, I have a policy, you know, follow that, follow your.
Yeah, I don't think they want to do that.
Well, they're, they're not that expensive. And actually, what some of the cities do is, if you don't return it, you, you don't get your next request until you pay for it.
If we, if we deal with thumb drives that come from outside our facility, we need to have a separate device, I mean, because they're not a drive state company. And the only way to do that is to have a new computer PC sitting in there. You plug it in and you format that hardware, the thumb drive. It lights off, everything is on, it can freeze it in mode so it can be worked with. So you have to have a procedure for handling four of them.
Have any library, a library on a thumb drive and loan it out?
No, it's not my issue.
Yeah, I, I have purchased a thumb drive lately, assuming the rats are ever. But if they're very, very inexpensive, it would seem like the thing to do would be for the city to buy, you know, a thumb drive and, and.
Not that if they want it on a thumb drive, we charge them for.
That's what I was gonna say.
Five dollars for whatever it costs.
Provide them with a thumb, a thumb drive with records on it at, you know.
At cost. Yes, I think that's a fair plan, you know?
Does that agree? Well, the thumb drive and touch down the door.
Yeah, it does sound good, it does sound.
Also, we have to provide an easy form if they want?
It, it says you have to make it available, there, there is some language in the FOIA about that.
I mean, if, 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 can I, can I send them on a thumb drive, you know, and then I, and I have email or email?
Well, we can do that, I think, yes.
You know, I mean, take an extreme on.
But, but email, the only reason you're, yeah, the only reason you're using thumb drives right now is because of the size limitations of email. I mean, a, a normal just, you know, one or two documents is not a big deal. But if you, it's a huge document or a huge video or something like that, it's gonna be, it's gonna be oversized for email.
I don't, I don't think that the law would be that restrictive on anything that's a video between the person that's asking and the, and the person that, and, and us. Even to, you know, one option is to let them sit down by the computer here and review all the documents here. If they don't actually need to take them with them, they, you know, they, you know, review them here, so.
That poses some problems too. If they take the documents with them and we don't notice it. And finding a spot for them, I guess we could send them over here, but there's no room.
Well, one thing is that we, we're not gonna have people here full time. I'm not having somebody that can stand over the shoulder to make sure they're listed on the group case. I mean, I think, and I, you know, I, I was 47 years in the newspaper business on the other side of trying to obtain information like this. And newspapers and board statements, and this child, he's staying on the credit. None of them ever been, all, I mean, couldn't, can't request, in my experience, anywhere you want. I mean, you want information, we can get to the digital copy, we can print God of our copy. But, I mean, I don't know, it's gonna be looking at law, we're seeing, you know, we wanna be successful, we're gonna doubt about that. But I don't know that, you know, as a part-time office, some of the things would be kind of impossible to deliver the county.
Well, we're gonna have to find a way to do it in a timely manner because there's a three-day limit.
I understand.
So if Wes has to come over here, if someone has to come over and access Wes's computer to get something, it's gonna have to be done.
Some comments are, and one, from what I've seen and what I've figured, we need to do is first of all, the original documents. Those need to be hard copy filed in books, official books. And those would never be given out early, making my FOIAs. Then you have an excerpt copy you can file that is made in writing. A photocopy you can pull out of a photograph file and make a photocopy. Or to, probably you'd also wanna, uh, digital copies on a computer that should be led off by that queue. From another question, like, everything, kind of, looks to what there is to do. Are we talking about calendar days, business days?
Business, business days is in the law.
Because my concern is far out of the order, I mean, I'd be here within two days.
We're gonna have to figure out also how, how to back up Wes, some way or another, if he leaves town or whatever. So.
This, again, this is just a preliminary.
Discussion.
And then eventually we'll have to come up with the ordinance or resolution. What the law will kind of do, sorry, I was talking.
So, the procedure steps that I came up with, noting that there's a three-day time limit of filling the request. Any town official, including the recorder, may accept the request. The recorder obtains any requests arriving in town email or submitted through the website. The official who receives the request will mark it with the date, time received, the three-day time limit clock starts ticking. Then the town official provides the request or a copy of the original request to the recorder. The recorder locates the requested document or determines the feasibility of providing a report if it exists in the accounting system. If requested document involves email records or archived documents in the cloud or off-site storage, the recorder will engage the help of the email provider or off-site storage manager. If any delays in meeting the three-day time limit are anticipated or encountered, the recorder will inform the quester of the issues involved. The recorder contacts the quester once all the documents are available to ask by what method the quester would like to receive the documents and advises the quester where to find the requested documents if they have been made available to the public on the website already. Then the recorder provides the documents to the quester in the method requested. And I didn't put here, but they should, we should, we probably need a, a timestamp on the request form that stamps it down, you know, time, time out. So, any, any questions about that or any discussion on that part? It, it sounds like all the work falls on the recorder, unfortunately, Wes, but we have no office help.
We need to study this, study the FOI.
Uh, I guess that's up to the mayor. Do you wanna go through this, you know, wanna look at the form that I created? We could start using that immediately. Over on the left-hand side, you'll see there's a box for our use. And that's where we put the date received, the time received, and who it was received by. And then the quester fills out their name, email, telephone number. And the way they like to receive the, whatever it is they're requesting, whether it's paper copies, a CD, the town loan or thumb drive, which I guess we're gonna cross that one out. Or their own thumb drive or their own DVD. I might just combine the CD, DVD in one thing because it's virtually the same. And then they put in a description of the specific records or information. If they don't know exactly what records are available, they just ask for particular information sought in enough detail that the town can respond. And they, we ask them to be as specific as their knowledge of the available records will allow. The more specific they are, the better, like, we are coming up with the right records. Yes, Ken?
There's nothing in here about email, I thought.
Well, a record would be an email, it could be, it could be an email record, yes.
And I, I don't see it as a method received.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying over there, that's a good point. Emailed. I'll add it, yeah.
Maybe add a box, you just, what is the link? Available links?
The.
You know, the, the checkmark, I wanna know what link to go up to. That's all I'm gonna know, how the information.
Oh, okay.
We're not gonna give them that.
But wouldn't we, wouldn't that be?
I mean, like, it's, we'll sign things on that. Documents folder page, the seventh, second folder, and we supply it.
Okay, okay, a website link could be the way they got it, I get it. Okay, I'll add that, okay. So, any, any other comment on those two sections?
Are we gonna press on the one or not right now, or are we gonna investigate it further?
I have it crossed off, it sounds like it's pretty much dead. I know, I think HICID does that some now, don't they, or have they quit doing that?
I do not know of any time that we provide a thumb drive. I know people bring thumb drives in and copy files to them.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't recommend it.
Well, you know.
It's made of a procedure for.
There again, I think that thumb drive might infect your machine, possibly could.
That's why I say, yes, if you set up a PC that's just fully isolated from everything, its only purpose is cleaning thumb drives.
It, this certainly sounds like the safer method of just providing our own out of a box.
If you have to provide a novel.
Well, I think, I think that in some cases, we're going to want to suggest providing without thumb, thumb drive, because it's gonna be the easiest for us.
The last audio file from last meeting, forty-five minutes, is ready to the thumb drive. That's how I spoke from the file, my experience to a CD, probably a half an hour. Write it to the CD.
And one of the things I ran into this past week was that if we put something on Google that exceeds like 128 megabytes or something like that, it's too big for it, for Google to scan for viruses. And so it sits out there and when someone wants to go retrieve it, it says, it gives you this big warning message. This document cannot be scanned for viruses, download it your own way. And I mean, that's a real deterrent to people. I mean, that's, you know, you don't wanna download that file when you see that message. And so, in those cases, we need another method of getting a file to them if we can't. And it's too big to email, it's too big to put on Google. Your thumb drive is about the only way you're gonna get it.
Uh, the workaround to that problem is I can limit my recording that I'm getting to one hour, stop it and start a new recording. So we got second one, I think, two second three, that would post being, being downloaded.
Right. Now, what I've found is on videos and recordings, we can post those on YouTube for free, any size. And I, I put out, I actually created the Town of Holiday Island channel in YouTube. And I've posted the last two Zoom videos. This last one was too big for anybody to access. And I put it on YouTube and it plays beautifully. No warning, no virus warning. And it's out there for the public and you, you can just go to YouTube and, you know, search for it too, so. You don't have to have a link or anything. But you, you can give a personal link to them also. And videos and recordings probably are gonna be our biggest files, when you think about it. So that, that's my current best option for videos and recordings. Okay. Uh, the, the next paragraph on this form I got from a, a best practice forum out there. Coalition for Freedom of Information sort of suggested, I didn't use exactly the same language, but it says, many public records are readily available on the Town of Holiday Island website and do not require a FOIA request. These are identified in the Town of Holiday Island FOIA policy. But we'll put that in our policy. As a quester, I have read the Holiday Island FOIA policy and fee agreement, which will have that, and agreed to pay any fees for searching or copying those records I have requested as allowed by law and stated in the fee agreement. If the cost exceeds whatever amount they wanna put in, please inform me as soon as the cost is known. So, this is sort of the disclaimer to the quester saying, beware, read our fee, policy and fee agreement. And by, you know, signing this document, requesting these documents, you understand that fee agreement and that we will tell you if the cost exceeds some amount that you wanna put on this form. But they will have to pay whatever cost it is.
I would recommend moving paragraph to right at the top.
Okay. Okay. And then the next paragraph is basically for news media people, this was also listed. Please identify yourself as a member of the news media applicable, and if you wish, claim a fee exemption. Please indicate below and identify the issue which your request is related for your gathering purposes. Your signature below will confirm the closure of these records is in public interest and will contribute significantly to the public's understanding of the issue and will confirm that your use of the records is not being used for any commercial purpose. And there's a spot to identify the news media organization and the issue. And then sign, there's a, there's a spot for the signature and the, the quester, the requested, or the date they requested it, the date they told out the form another way.
Question?
Yes.
I've seen that phrase before, used for any commercial purposes in several places. What if the request information wasn't available?
They don't give it.
Okay. It has to be non-commercial. And so if I'm a resident of Holiday Island and I have a business, whatever it is, and I need to make it in this, so I can't come to you and ask for whatever record that might give you the information because I'm gonna use it for my business. Is that true?
You know, unfortunately, this is all the news media paragraph. It's not, and the other part of it, the document I copy that. It's not in the other part of it, the document I copy that of the TV and news media paragraph, and I'm not sure why.
Okay. Well, asking for whatever record they need to generate for the rest of the...
It's also against the law for someone to request something related to his, if they have an interest in any...
Okay. Just a question, but seen it in the... What is it, an industrial request?
Yeah.
Well, on bid, wouldn't it? It wouldn't prohibit them if we talked and agreed to bid stacks, but they would be able to request that.
They'd get that. They'd get that.
Because that would be commercial.
But there was some language in the FOIA Act about... It was illegal for someone who might have an interest in bidding from obtaining some information. I'm not sure what that said exactly right now, but...
The next one, suggestion about the, the very top. Requester's name, and you put, please print.
Please print.
Because you have two unrecognizable signatures, one at the bottom, one at the bottom. Who wouldn't have any idea?
Good point.
Making up the request.
Good point. Yeah, I'll look some more about that commercial purpose and see if that maybe could go in the other kind of disclaimer paragraph. I think, should we look into that?
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Very well thought out, very well put together. We could conceivably have a resolution by the next one of the meeting.
Listen, Mayor. I did want to, my studies looking for this, a reference to statute 14-2-201. The title was Public Records General, Subchapter 2, Reproduction Records. And the subtitle was Authority Requirements. And it talks about the head of the county or municipal department may cause any of their records scanned to be electronically used or processed. And then it says, "At the time of re-reproduction, the agency head shall attach his or her certificate to the record certifying that it is the original record. And this certificate shall be reviewed for the original." It suggests that they need to put a mark on the original, like our county clerk does when they give a document, it says, "This is the original." So when it's scanned, it has a copy that has certified that it is the scan of the original copy. So do we need a stamp for our recorder to be used for his lead audit?
Not to do it for a lot of things. We need to have a stamp.
Okay.
On a plaque that's going to suggest...
Okay.
I guess, I haven't totally digested what that paragraph actually means. We're not, we're not talking about big standing or somehow standing every document that somebody makes FOIA.
No, it's not, it's a store electronically, but then you have to review this. So if they don't need, you have to review this for FOIA department. Has to be part of the...
Every storage division, every ordinance.
Yeah. Our minimum is...
Anything, yeah.
Our official documents, you have to mark, put a mark, a certificate assessed. I think because a clerk puts a stamp on it like that, it says, "Conde Dos, Conde Quir, Carol County, Mr. Visiter, they also have a date and time, and then you have a necessary receipt that implies per, that's per official stamp."
Well, if you get a line of things, I think like even the mountains, I'm supposed to have a signal. Who applied the seal to the merits of the documents, wonder if that would be...
I'm sure that would be a certificate that the market has the original.
And he did those order of this seal that has the adjustable...
Thanks.
Just to have a little dial to change that, and not add signature.
Okay. Any other discussion on this topic? That will be on the, the actual resolution on the agenda for the next meeting. All right. Well, I wanted to... Moving on to discussion on the debate talk and talk meeting. Let I take this to something that you requested. You put on the agenda?
I did it. When we were working on our incorporation letter, we had a Facebook page, this is I will sit in the Holiday Islands 2020. And we wanted to communicate with our community and tell them what's going on. And I know that outside there are opportunities. I'm using the market as a light. And there are several others that are marketed as possible. And mostly recent publications we put out was the announcement of the workshop meeting. Then it appeared on over 500 pages of users that have seen or noticed the records when people see it. So I think it's a viable tool for us. A lot of units have their own Facebook pages when you look outside it and they're looking at the whole, the H2 tool. So I have a favor of promoting that, but there are a lot of responsibilities that we got as a city. And the responsibilities are on how we manage that information. Apparently, the anyone, most anything on a city page that can remove it must violate the policy that was established. And the policy is pretty clear in the law and the patents from municipal league about some things should be prohibited from our Facebook page to use that. There's also a recommendation by the municipal league and other authorities that we have a social media policy for municipal officials. Because we have a job and duty very hard as a city when we... We also are still by name officials with a city when we're not in this meeting. So our posting is being on social media, that is considered negatively. And the most recent publication in their 14 is that there's a police department problem because a policeman posted something on a web page, and is that considered receiving complaints from the public according to the Department of News and Police? They also make comments of the timing, the order, the intent, those that are being removed from transportation is both troubling and harmful. The department does not have a policy concerning social media. It does have one governing conduct and behavior. The piece that will be approved about our conduct and our behavior is anything about social media. So it's something they have to consider, something they should vacuum up in any time and period of process, so I will put on social media.
Can we just, can we just put the, the social media page where we... Post, you know, this is inspirational friends, I like any comments?
I've been told that feature you set up is to put up due to that. Random municipal and limiting comments, so. Yeah, but I'm told that can be done in those people, I just have to figure out. And if you can, we can let it out. We can see the work, the model, and the Facebook pages we have.
Well, I mean, just perhaps with it as a sample, while they're over the gate to see what the country's laws to have or any, uh, wants to add or comment in. And, you know, lawyers can correct and wrong, but I don't know about saying any comments to any of their folks.
They have a Facebook page? No, you're looking at their website, including.
They have a social media Facebook.
Well, they do, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if we had a Facebook page that did not allow any comments and only on postings, then we could be able to avoid the issue of unfavorable comments that we would consider removing and want to have it processed.
I mean, I was thinking we value the citizens and information to them.
I agree. The, the document that I was setting talks about whatever we created it may be for social media, because you have to have a system of packing it up because it comes with public records that we posted. Well, it's another issue I have to investigate for how to do that. The downside is that Facebook is a sovereign operating system. We don't necessarily have full control. They can delete records and do whatever they want because it's their pay, their system. So that's why the need for reading of that, not implementing what we do at home. So it has its caveats, but I think it has more benefits than disadvantages.
I know this morning I was looking on the, on the, Maryville. And one of the things that they said, you want to build their webpage, come to their Facebook. So I think it's time for cities to have a Facebook now. But the idea that that becomes a FOIA document or food document. I don't know that it would necessarily happen with FOIA because Facebook is all for everybody to, wow, I mean, you said it all then.
You know, we have to back it up and have security. I mean, that is...
But why would we go into it if we had to do that? I think we do need a social media policy. This is because, you know, it exists. It's, it's the wild west of communication. And I think we do need to have a policy of who's going to be around the first, you know, visual, to the city, uh, those from here. Who's going to be in the top role, what's not going to be in the top role, click on that. Uh, I think, I think we do need that policy.
I think we can control who posts. I think we cannot control who comments, if, if it's open to commenting. But we can have a policy that states what's appropriate and what's not appropriate.
That's correct.
Very nice. You know, I, we're only talking about Facebook because that's the one that we're comfortable using. Twitter is far more popular in the, in the rest of the world now. And based on our former president, the government said that the president's Twitter, you know, Twitter statement are official government statements. So... I just grabbed something that, I don't know, there's something else that is being...
Our work.
It got canceled. Instagram. Instagram. I think all we need to do is Facebook if we do anything.
And now we're not going to allow comments.
If possible.
It is possible.
Lynn's going to find out.
If we do it, why not? We're going to do it.
Yeah.
But, and, you know, if we've got these documents on a website, why even need a Facebook?
It keeps people, and a lot of people use Facebook on a regular basis, and they can follow Facebook and get up-to-date information, you know?
Yeah.
Announcements. It's useful.
Yeah. Using, using Iced as an example. I wish that Facebook were a more popular tool because there are tons and tons and tons of the good things going on in how they're at, you know, the water departments are doing, the street departments, whatever. And, you know, you can only track so much into a ward of ministry or theater. It's very difficult paying attention to the old seating games. If it had an effective Facebook page where you could post major accomplishments and, you know, tweak your horn a little bit about things that are going on, then maybe people would be, wouldn't be so critical of, of, you know, of officials.
It can almost be your like everyday newsletter, you know? What's the latest thing that's happened or you want to tell people about?
I'm just looking down the road that it will get into urban, plane landing, zoning. Some of the requirements about having public forums and keeping the public informed about what they're planning to do, what they're liking, doing, inviting them. It's a tool that we've got to have. And it's going to be very essential to get everybody informed that we can have a meeting, or have a forum, and we can talk about it.
If, if, you know, theoretically, if you had, you know, 80% of the, of the registered voters in Holiday Island, or the property owners in Holiday Island, as followers of your Facebook page, that would constitute being the highest circulation publication in the area relative to FOIA, or, I don't know, some stuff like that. So I think it's worth doing, but I do think we need a policy that makes sure that it doesn't become a law of all this.
You know, have a policy concerning whether we post on it or a policy about how we respond on our own private, posting things on...
I think we need all of the powerful social media policies. But I think, I think it's just possible.
Right.
Because, you know, I could post something on my personal website that could create, create great problems for the city.
I have a lot of policy, I really can even post it, that I think is very good and when compared to the things that I'm doing in municipal league, they align very close. So I'll put that together and submit it where we consider it.
Okay. All right.
So what I'm going to be working on setting going forward, it sounds like Facebook is more than a go. Maybe we talk about what media should we use to start from scratch? We could like, look at any of the Facebook page you had before and pick out things that really shouldn't be there for a city page.
Is it possible to change the name of your, of an existing page?
Yes, you can.
Because that would save you trouble for saving stuff that we had before.
Right. But I can delete comments, I can delete content. If I, I can clean up the old page if we wanted to start with that. So we have, there's nothing else to disturb or gain from. And the promises that we are making, are planned, are controlled, due to what we've got there before.
I like it.
If that's the right place to start, or just get a fresh?
Well, I mean, change the name, it will be aggressive, I mean...
No, it'll change the name without changing the content.
No, I think you need to do some of the things.
Okay. Lynn, do you have any other ideas on, or what we think about the video?
Sure, sure. Yeah.
And is that appropriate? And I'm going to work on cleaning up that little page on my own, on the meeting's log.
Everything that's on that page now is, is not city-related, right?
Not going to, not going to come up for new business.
Right.
Would be more announced about city than anything that goes down.
So, get it off now before we officially out the city Facebook page because that's the best, that you can do anymore.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, good.
I just talked myself backing away from the mic and talking, so.
It's easy.
All right. Next on the list then is discussion of a very request for full. We're not going to actually discuss a resolution or... We're not going to actually discuss a resolution or present a resolution today. What we want to do today is give him the authority to send out the RFUs to the Congress to protect the city from.
Well, they drafted up a RFU months ago, and they sent it out for comments, the only comments that I had were a couple from Lynn. I incorporated one, two, three of them. And I read it today and I see what they just wrote. I also, you know, I asked landlords names with prospects, and that, so I'm gonna call him, but I called Downs, Berry, I called Berryville, I called Muntzville, and he reached. But I don't think we want to get a term for this.
Potential kind of work of interest in some way.
Ways to approach. Anyway, I found out the name of the firm that Berryville has, he told me that he was elected, but he's obviously a term for Green Forest. I didn't call to see if he was the interviewer. I would like, you know, to get this ready, to send out sometime next week. And one of the things is, you know, at the end of the ask, you know, then they have to do that, you know. I would say the end of February, and, you know, the requests, the comments back, people kind of give us, you know, a couple of weeks to study them, review them, make a selection and review. And I, I think what we want to look at is, being able to have a term on board by first of April, I think that would be a good timeline on the thing. By that time, we should have hundreds of, I don't see it. I mean, we can start, frankly, we can do, but I think that's just a timeline.
Yeah, I think we do need to have the attorney on board when we actually start passing any ordinance as opposed to revolution out, making, even to the extent that we may ask the attorney to draft some requirements to play, if everybody's comfortable with one April.
It's okay with me.
Yeah, okay. And what, well, I can ask you, Dan, on your phone number and your contact.
Your, your phone number, I think, and I got the history, because I, you know, I believe I'll use that process too much.
I, I changed my email, my original email on Earth instead of the five zero one. But I don't know, did anybody have any problems with the RFU? I've got another document to write and move to evaluate, to revise.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Are we going to be interviewing these firms or people at a county council meeting? How, how, how do we do the selection?
That's up to you. I, this is getting responses. You know, I, I know when we did the district once and then we brought in, you know.
Dan, certainly we would review whatever comes back as a response to documents, we would review in a public meeting.
Okay.
Even if we have to call a special meeting to state the time. And then, I don't know.
May that, that's, that, you know, if you want to have interviews, then that could make the selection process work.
The thing we need to see what kind of response do we get first? I'm not sure we're gonna get that many responses, so it's true.
Yeah, I mean, one way to do it would be either the mayor can determine the candidates and, you know, we'd like to get four or five, there was an interview or something, they didn't, you know, share the request.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and get, you know, send it out to the board to see what, again, you know, when we were searching for the term for incorporation, we didn't get a lot of people wanting to jump in. But I would like to just get it out and see.
Yeah, I have, you know, I have to get you to sign. This, this is a request for qualification, but I'm pulled to, a request for poll. Isn't it kind of important to know, now that, you know, we don't, our services, you know, legal or, and they're, we do not ask for, we ask for qualification, and then we need to locate.
Right.
Okay. Or accountants and other things.
Right.
It's the same sort of thing, you're supposed to look at qualification for doing the work. But there, normally, you also can submit your, uh, quote, the grant was only twelve to be twenty-five percent.
You did not ask for this.
What was, like, your ask now? I think the incorporation committee, if you're pleased with the term, um, it's terminated all part of where we want to project. Justin, you have a sprint here?
Yeah. Yeah, they should be on the list.
Yeah, they'll see. Okay, I think we can do this just by a vote of the council. All in favor of allowing him to send out these RFUs to, to elect the sort of qualified, technically qualified, uh, municipal terminus? Say aye.
Aye.
The votes? Yeah, I have that, so can I do that?
Yeah, we can.
All right. That's, that's the it for the business. I'll open up at this time for all the comments, which would be coming through the computer. So I'm going to refer to the tech squad here.
I'll, I'll open my speaker if you want.
Is there anybody out there in EV land?
I want to raise the hand.
Uh, yes, you can raise your hand or, and then we'll unmute you. Anybody see any hands raised?
No, we had, we did, did a walk in minutes ago, and I don't know where we went.
That was Dale. Yeah, I think he wanted to see Lawrence.
Oh, okay.
Not the, not the council.
Okay.
I have a quick question. This is Holly Westcott with the ESN candidate.
Well, to the microphone, Linda here.
Just, just, um, was trying to figure out who is sitting to Linda Graves's left. Say that again.
Jerry Pittman.
Thank you. I believe it was Jerry that said that you absolutely want to be transparent, and I just wanted to make sure that was him who said that. When you were discussing FOIAs and, and it was his effort to make information fully accessible, I, I want to, wanted to quote the correct person.
We think that was Jerry, yes.
Okay, thanks so much.
And other comments? Comments or comments?
I didn't comment.
Rebecca has her hand raised.
That comment?
Rebecca has her hand waved.
She has a mic.
I have asked her to unmute.
Can you unmute?
I can't seem to unmute it.
You have a microphone.
Oh, well, is she putting anything on chat?
Nothing, I see.
Rebecca, do, huh? What did she say?
I have a little pop-up message from Rebecca that says, can you read?
Okay, she had a post to one forty-nine that says, Google Drive is not for public.
There's no reason why it cannot be used for the public to access it. We make it available.
She made a YouTube head of artists.
If you're just watching on YouTube, I don't think you could get it.
She had a comment for those of us that just want to hear of Zoom being, the process that Hi-Site utilizes allows a viewer to enter into the Zoom archive and a piece of gig per view.
Yeah, I looked into the Zoom recording in the cloud for our meetings, and the space is limited, I think, to one gig, which that doesn't give us hardly any space at all to put a recording in or to save multiple recordings. I would rather record it to my PC and we have a backup audio orbiting always, so I think that's enough we need. Unless the council wants to talk about it.
I'm getting a little pop-up that's different. I'm thinking she's one of the fellows, and she walked into Zoom, not into YouTube, when she's viewing us.
Well, I know she does, but I don't think we're gonna do it that way, so.
She made a comment to the YouTube live broadcast.
Well, yeah, I, I gave her a video recording by posting it on YouTube, and it's very easy for us to post on YouTube, recording and make it available to the world.
Okay.
But you can, but I don't think we want to, so. Because they can't, participants can't comment back to us if they're on YouTube live. It's just a broadcast. So it doesn't, it doesn't solve our open meeting policy.
Your last comment is, please, you have many problems, including social media comments. Okay, what other problems?
Okay, there's most different we can do. Okay, let's move on to Councilmember Powell.
The comment I had was, I was a member of the audience in my last Hi-Site meeting, and there were several comments made between Hi-Site folks and the planning commission folks that were developer, and some things that they said are things that not necessarily aligning for the emergency. And I think that we need to do the goal, or as best we can, with our planning and zoning and our, our project that we started. So our incorporation efforts included mentions of planning and zoning ordinances and a tremendous amount of work has to take place before we can get to that point, so we need to start it. So sooner or later.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm kind of dragging my piece down, not bringing that to the top of the priority list, but I, I agree, it's something we need to get working on. And, you know, trying to figure out how to either turn the planning commission over to the city or set up a cooperative department. You know, I, I don't know enough about what, I don't know enough about their operation yet, and I need to, you know, you and I need to spend some time with some, one on one time, maybe, and learn more about, you know, how their videos are structured, what makes them, what, what their reporting responses will be better, you know, to video developer, how, you know, how long the developer, um, rights, you know, continue or something like that. So, yes, I agree, we need to move forward with that. And if it's, you know, I was trying to make a comment to, the, just kind of tie it together. When we, when we were, you know, planning and incorporating, planning for incorporation, we said that planning and zoning was an important consideration, you know, for the city to take over. When people think of the planning commission, they generally think of a larger umbrella and full enforcement than just planning and zoning. They think of the planning commission as being responsible for making sure that people keep their yards maintained, don't pile ash up in their yard, don't attempt chickens in their backyard, you know, maintaining street maintenance and everything else. And if you look at how the municipal structure, a lot of those things have their own category outside of planning and zoning. Planning and zoning generally refers to, you know, land use within the city, how your streets are gonna be laid out and things like that, you know, how your facilities are gonna be laid up for the future growth, and, and building codes and things like that. Other things that people are concerned with, as an example, this week Lawrence got a call from a lady that lives in Berryville that here, who was a complaint that there's a house in the neighborhood that's been piling junk up on the front porch for some time, and it's getting worse, and sort of the plankboard, there's plastic and stuff also accumulating. And they want to know what they should do about it. And they said, out of our city, you know, can the city do something about it, or should the city do something about it? Lawrence responded that the city has no ordinance, it was yesterday, can't get involved in enforcement, but the only thing we have is a petition that is proposed, you know, the, if the three property owners to sign the complaint form and turn it into the planning commission, and then maybe we'll try to take action. And so, you know, I thought, you know, okay, if, if we did have an ordinance, where would that fit? Where would people piling ash up in their yard fit? You know, it doesn't fit under planning and zoning. It fits, if you look at other cities, it fits under title five health and sanitation. So, you know, when you talk about, when you look at this, how to set up the municipal hold, we're gonna have to do it in bites. There's little bites and there's big bites. Planning and zoning is a big bite, it's a huge bite. But writing an ordinance, you know, for maintaining, for somebody not being able to turn their property into a mill, well, would not require that big bite. So, as soon as, you know, I, I think this, I still don't want to start writing ordinances until we're safe, because I don't want to have to go. until we're a city, because I don't want to have to go back and redo all of the ordinances that were written for the town because of our city. Now, maybe that doesn't have to be done. Maybe there's some way of writing one resolution that says that all ordinances that were written for the town now apply to the city, something like that. But if there isn't, I don't want to have to pay to qualify something twice because of our last creation change. If that's not an issue, then I think we could probably start working, you know, relatively near the future on the, on Title V of the, of the municipal code, and start writing ordinances for that kind of thing. Planning and zoning, you need to start now. But I could easily see the idea in a year-long project.
It would take a while.
Yeah. Before we get everything figured out, there's to do, there's to do, you know, how to do this, how to do it right.
We need to get started. Yeah. And I don't know what to, I think, after you have a meeting with Mickey, you guys, you need to schedule a course action.
And we don't want to, the most unfortunate thing that you would end up doing would be to set up parallel, you know, operations where we, we have the city planning and zoning, and then the developer still has the planning commission, and end up, you know, butt in heads and stepping on each other's toes. And, you know, nobody knows who's actually running the, running the show.
All the guys on the planning commission would agree, you know, would agree as far as that. Any, everyone I talked to.
Well, Mickey didn't come across that positively in the last two proceedings. I mean, he wasn't negative about it, but he did bring up the fact that they have this issue that they report to the developer. And as long as that relationship exists, then it's a problem that we have to figure out.
Mr. Mayor, just a question or a comment. Doesn't the planning commission basically, I mean, their, their mission is to enforce the covenants? Make sure they're enforced somehow. I said, the land covenants, covenants that are with the land. And their only, the only thing I think they can really do is give an exception, right?
They can grant.
They can grant exceptions. So if the city passed an ordinance that was compliant with the covenant, covenants for all properties, if they passed an exception, it might be illegal.
That's possible, depending what they accept it on.
And maybe the city could grant an exception.
The, I don't know that that's true, because, because the covenants don't go away just because the city comes along. You know, covenants are agreements, really, the covenants are agreements between the property owners. And that, with the purpose of determining that has value.
Yeah, I don't think the city could do anything in conflict with the covenants. They could go further than the covenants, perhaps.
But the way they're setting up, they don't deal with anybody that's terrible.
Well, I think there is something in the covenant. No, they don't, you're right. They have no enforcement authority.
The only, the only thing that they can do is issue letters. And there's something in the covenant that says that they can issue fines. However, that's been struck down.
That's been struck down.
So they can't issue fines. So all they can do is basically wag their finger at the person.
However, we could enforce an ordinance, we could have an ordinance that said the same thing as the covenant and be able to enforce it. And I think that's what we ought to do.
The two things that the planning commission would like to get, would like the city to take over from them that, that I'm pretty confident in, is issues like that where they have no, no full enforcement authority, no muscle to be able to force people to comply. The only way that people can be forced to comply is through property owners suing them. The other is a building inspector. They, you know, they have building codes, the planning commission, there's building codes and standards and everything else. They issue building contracts, but they have no code, they have no building inspector.
Yeah, there's, there's no, no reason for anyone to use a building inspector.
Right.
Out here. I shouldn't have said that on the mic, but.
Other than, other than the fact that you're, when you get into building, you're supposed to tell them who you're gonna use for contractor. And that's supposed to give the planning commissions some reassurance that you're using licensed contractors that will do things correctly. But there's nothing that prevents somebody from saying, you know, to the house builder, I'm gonna do my own wiring, I'm gonna do my own plumbing. And there's nothing that says that that's all being in that code. So they would like, they need how they ask them to. And they would like the city to provide a building inspector. And.
And that's getting more urgent every day.
It is.
Because there are houses going up every week now.
I think we need to have a meeting with you three guys and get an idea of where they want to go. And then we can give it to where we can, hopefully we'll have a hearing on it and then we'll resolve, you know, the law we're doing. Anyway.
I would suggest we start with a plan of what ordinances are priority to get in place.
Mr. Mayor, look, I mean, I hope we have to do to that point. To get to the point where we give the ordinances of something codes.
Okay.
First of all, we need to appoint or approve an ordinance to establish a planning commission. And then to get our points, a commission membership is by ordinance. The city planning commission needs and forms, they need to do things like naming your chair, vice chair, how many, the things that we didn't already. Then they set up goals and policies drafted in a policy document. Then they define the planning areas and boundaries, creating a planning area map that gets filed with county recorder. Then it establishes laundry, streets, and community facilities, parks, and land use and benches, and suburban areas and improvements. Then there's a public forum that shares those goals and policies with planning committees. The city council passes the resolution to adopt the goals. Then we can have public data that'll meet those goals and then improvements about economic, social, political, survey, new generation, on manning, and natural environment in a public forum. Then you prepare a land use plan document to appeal to goals. Then you get a registration to file a land use plan with the county recorder. Then you draft all kinds of programs how to implement the plan, how the impact, the community and the land, the constructions are organized, and the revenue individuals as well as seven visions, and then annoying answering documents that have potential impacts. Then you review and adopt that plan in a public forum, notify before the programs are adopted officially by the city council. Then you draft a program to implement the plan. That's when ordinances, zoning codes, seven visions, local codes, and county codes coming in. And then the last thing is to board a zoning justice. There's so much work that has to be done before we can get to ordinances imposed and housing control.
I think we need to shortcut that process substantially.
These are documented and stacked. It said this, and that, this, and this, and that, this, and this. All these things are.
When High Sid had to do that, it made one, this development form with planning committee.
I don't think so.
Actually, the planning commission is not part of High Sid at all.
I think we need to see what some of our citizens do. Everyone of us has, has. We, everyone of us refers to the planning commission. Planning, zoning, and building.
But as, as Dan was saying earlier, we could, we could, you know, take a stab at doing some health and safety ordinances without going through a whole planning commission.
Sure.
And building codes might keep part of safety.
There's only, there's only three sections of municipal codes that were even involved, that, that checklists if you just said.
But I would think you could have an ordinance about needing to have a building inspector inspect new property before they get a building per bed or have something like that.
But.
Without going through a planning commission.
And have something to inspect too. If you don't have any building ordinances, then the building inspector isn't going to, he's nothing to.
An ordinance that establishes the code by which you're following, right? Is that what you're saying?
If I have a building inspector and I'm gonna go out and inspect some, some property, I need to have a building code that says that, you know, by, by this ordinance, by this ordinance, so this house is supposed to be held according to these standards.
Right.
And that's what I would expect it is, it doesn't need to have a building inspector, it doesn't need to have.
No, I. That's why I say we have, there's somewhere missing.
I'd like to comment. One thing, when we go to our office and those little, we're just not at the office. Because we aren't living here, we would find like every, once every two hours, what was going on, we'd get your forest or, for at least to you, then if there was a building inspector watching, constructing, ensuring of law. Really, I think at that time, they'd be willing to have an occupancy firm before we could move in, or I can't say it. And that was probably not legal, but we were, that, that a problem. And I also, I have communicated complaint. I have read the reports and reported this, or to submit, there are reports to the county except of permits that are issued. And so, if they're accepted, most deals are, most of the, except the property. And also, I think to submit an inquiry for housing permits, of new housing permits to the Bureau of Census. I don't know, you know, I'm not a lawyer. The district, the planning commission, does anything while I can now. I guess my thoughts is, in order to issue those reports, we might as well not be wanting to issue a permit, so that we will know.
We should be, that's actually good. What they're, what they're doing, what they're doing up there now is basically.
Now, instead of, you know, I still think this is, there's two different boxes here. There's all the things that we can do now that hasn't been involved, involved by the commission. And then there's planning and zoning, which very much involves them because, you know, we have to, there's no way that we can move forward without considering their state and all of that. You know, and so we do need to meet with Mickey and, and just get a clear understanding of how we should move forward and what, you know, what hurdles are there. In the meantime, far before, long before we get to that, we can start writing ordinances of friends like Helen St. Anthony.
And Mr. Mayor, I was, I think you talked to David Orr this past week, and I talked to him too. He was telling me that, oh, well, they had to come out here and provide their building inspector to inspect a house that was being built because they needed a F, F something, one of those loans, federal loans.
It was HUD.
HUD loan.
And they needed an occupancy permit, to give it the home.
And they said that, David Orr told me that Green Forest had the only state certified building inspector in Carroll County. And that evidently Green Forest might be willing to loaning to us to do inspections. So that's a thought. And, you know, he would build us and we would collect from the people, I assume.
This, this, you know, we're discussing here, and I think in a long, I think we would have a whole enforcement officer and as opposed to a building inspector. You know, a building inspector would be part of the whole enforcement officer.
Apparently, this Green Forest building inspector was the only one that could do an acceptable inspection for that particular situation. That was what I was led to believe by David.
So, hello? Dan, Mr. Mayor, one thing we could do, and again, based on my past experience, is that we had a community development department that accomplished zoning and planning, code enforcement, a couple other things. We could do something like that and do it in pieces. I mean, code enforcement would be something that we could, you know, draft pretty quickly, you know, planning could spark that. But cause, if you remember back during the summer, moving all of our home, that was a pretty big issue. You know, issues.
Most of the property owners out here don't really care if that new house being developed on the corner is being wired by an electrician. But they do care if the guy that runs across the street from them has three cars up on blocks and the last refrigerator.
And the store that's owned and a car, something like that. So I mean, that's, that's one way you proceed. Because then it won't take the time, the planning is running, working out the relationships that, there's no reason to get this car. Probably, probably for the laws. And how we draw them in that part.
It would be, you know, with, with the mayor's suggestion and all the priorities, it certainly wouldn't be a bad idea for everybody to have a, you know, job done with what they think the priorities should be as far as attacking, working on, losing them. Would you add a, a guidance? Okay, any other comments?
Just one, you're really, did anybody have any calls with the visitor link on their fees and things like that?
That's, yeah, that's, they're gonna be sending us something. They said it might definitely be best. So I should have, it makes me.
I mean, this is based on visiting the law, and I think we're supposed to have their support and moving equipment on the turn is something that we really need to, oh. You know, one of those different areas, had that playroom on TV and, you know, trying to restate.
I've heard of it.
Okay.
Not, not very well.
Thank you, Tom, so. But anyway, this is just what it's worth. And we talked about chipping in for a house to this number, or a loom to this number, whatever. I mean, maybe we can go off chipping in and they still get a turn per, just per hour or whatever. And it was kind of on, maybe you could travel, move forward. Kind of pay off in the long run, so. That's what I am thinking.
I'm still confident that Wes is gonna give us some money here for this.
Maybe in February?
I received a thing next Tuesday from down there, and I went one kind of old and not quite for a little bit, for the bird and another, I'm like, you're gonna money. I mean, he said immediately, what I was thinking about doing, sending that, you know, that contract person with the treasury's office and talking to him more than a gentleman or a teenager or a teenager or, and point out.
and talking to him more than a gentleman, we were, to, I, uh, and point out, Jennifer already, you know, promised about what a code is, but, I mean, from the provisions in the code, to me, and maybe they're saying that they aren't giving us our, their, that, because it says it's supposed to be distributed to the municipalities with any debt, right, to the end of the law. Well, and then he uses this excuse while we're all here, uh, standing.
And we've been a municipality since December. We've been a municipality since December.
Right.
So, we are owed a January payment, in my mind.
Do we know that they, that even though we're not making a distribution there, are they, are they, have they carved out the holiday house, or, or those things?
I doubt, I doubt, because I questioned that a week, a week or 10 days ago, and would we have that thing that's much of a hit, uh, sent this information, and they're responsible once in a while?
Do they have a review process?
Maybe it would be another reason why I'm gonna be doing that company.
I would, I'm either fifty years in that, or I don't want to include this, so.
If we don't get some kind of a favorable, favorable one to respond by early next week, we need to, we need to bring in some outside help, even if we're, Justin, uh, Stifling, or something like that, uh, Alonjer, Aron's role, uh, Governor. Okay, any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
I got a plan, maybe, you're on.
Oh, I'm not doing the agenda again.
No.
There you go. Well, you're going to, right, you have public time, I'm sorry, yeah.
Maybe we're asking, we're going to, we're out.
Yeah, we did have some public, um, okay, yeah, the regular meetings. There's, there's no doubt, we, we're regular, we're sitting in the meeting the next month, right? Uh, Paul here, and then.
Did you have any schedule workshop for earlier coming?
Uh, topic.
You could do a workshop on ordinances needed immediately, if you want.
We, uh, prepared to do that?
Well, we have fifteen days to do it.
We need to put this especially on meeting, we, we, we need to put things on there.
Two hours before we do. All right, uh, you want to do a workshop, Tuesday is work for everybody, right? Unless it's warm or sunny.
[laughing]
The fact. We did it at nine o'clock in the morning last time, right?
Nine or ten, I can't remember.
I think we did it at ten o'clock. So, want to do it like on, uh, February 2nd?
It's Groundhog Day.
Well, I'm excited to see if you see your shadow.
Well, we, you know, we stack that, uh, before, why don't you take it back a little bit?
Yeah, man, by the end of the movie, we'll be really good at this. All right, so we'll schedule a workshop, uh, topic to be determined, uh, February 2nd and the 10th of 5th. And, um, then our regular meeting will be on the sixteenth. Now, we need to announce one. Ready to adjourn?
One, one announcement? I was asked by the county clerk yesterday that if anybody hasn't filed their financial disclosure forms, uh, they're due by February 1st.
Oh, I forgot about that. You mean the one we did before, when we got elected in December, not in town?
It's for 2020.
It's filed final.
Oh, okay.
If you didn't mark one in Germany, it's the final, of course.
I did a final one, yeah, so I don't have to do one? It's okay? That's okay?
I just did a one final one.
Oh, no, the final one was for the, uh, campaign finance, campaign. This would be your financial disclosure, that's a different form.
Oh, yeah, this one, yes, yeah, right.
Yeah, I think we all have to do that, unfortunately.
And you have to, everybody has to turn in a financial disclosure form, yes. All right, you know, the campaign.
Even if there's no change?
I think we all had to do it before we got put on the ballot, but.
You had to print out all the, you know, all the.
But I think that one was for 19, 2019. So, if you have to do it for 2020.
Does it look like it's due on May?
February 1st. And I have to be safe, it may be before February 1st.
It's February 31st.
Okay.
If you didn't have any changes to your financial situation from when you ran, so just try a copy of what you.
Pretty copy and paste, yeah.
A big, big.
My list was on, I don't know if yours got. They, I printed out thirty-six pages, and the ladies, I don't need them. I just kind of laundryed this, they're the other ones, you know.
Yeah, I heard she ripped all mine off, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just gonna redo the more I got.
I wish they would give us proper instructions on filling that out.
When I took it, my, uh, the, the, the end of the campaign report there back in December, the ladies wanted to have these standard, um, to, something that, you know, you want.
Make a motion to adjourn. We have a question to adjourn, we have a second?
I'll second.
The discussion will be adjourned.
Aye.
Close, adjourn.